Clerk Seigris, please call the roll.
It's like Trustee Anthony is absent. Trustee Foster?
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek?
Good evening.
Trustee, let the record reflect that Clerk Seigris is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens?
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman?
I am here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. Call for motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Motion presented, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two sets, call for motion to approve two sets of minutes from the, three sets of minutes from the February 4th, 11th, and 18, 2020 meetings.
So moved, Mr. Supervisor.
Support.
Motion presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now's the time for citizens' non-agenda items. Matt, if you could hold on for a second, we'll go, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak this evening regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Representative Colizar is with us this evening. State Representative Colizar, who represents City of Plymouth as well as the eastern portion of Canton Township. The floor is yours, sir. Good evening.
Northfield Plymouth, when Supervisor Williams says eastern portion of Canton, we're talking mainly Lilyda Lots. There's a couple parts where it kind of jig-jogs a little bit. One part goes out to Morton Taylor up near the Plymouth border, and there's one part that actually goes out to Hagerty toward the south. So it's a kind of a weird, it almost looks like a key, like a key facing down if you looked at the district. So a couple things I want to just update you all on, thank you for giving me the time here as well, is just a couple things with the governor's budget is the big thing that's kind of the news up in Lansing right now. Now, the legislature's budget is due by July 1st, which was a new law that was signed to make sure we don't wait till September this time, which I'm sure everybody here would appreciate. Couple things she is focused on, if you look at educational, she's talking about a weighted school funding formula to increase by about $225 per pupil for PCCS. Categorical grants, $60 million for at-risk and economically disadvantaged pupils, $60 million for special ed reimbursements, $5 million for English language learners, and $25 million in teacher supply reimbursement. What that is, is back on your federal taxes, teachers used to be able to claim up to $250 for reimbursement on school supplies they bought out of pocket. That was taken away in the Trump tax cut. She is putting it into the state-level taxes instead. Some other things she is, she's having is an opioid response program for $12.3 million. Asian cart barrier for $8 million, also various renewable energy grants. Some other points of interest as well is she is having some funds set aside for proposal two implementation, when we think about the redistricting commission. Also, the Pure Michigan campaign, which I know is very popular, she, it used to be at $37 million for Pure Michigan. Now, originally, she wanted to give them a portion in the last cycle, and then the opposing budget came back and basically increased Pure Michigan even though they said they didn't need it. So she acts the whole thing because it becomes all or nothing. She wants to go $15 million for Pure Michigan. It used to be 37. And then she's encouraging the private sector to kick in the other half for a marketing campaign. So it would be a common, it would be basically a joint public-private sector venture instead of all public. So that's what's going with Pure Michigan. I get asked that all the time. Other than that, again, that's just very high level. We only got it a little over a week ago, so I'm still kind of digesting a lot of it. As far as her roads bond, which I know that's been another big news item, her roads bond for this area, most notably is I-275, is going to get quite a bit of construction. You're basically talking from 5 Mile on 275 all the way down to about 94. So there's going to be a good chunk of that that's going to get redone. Also, M-14 is getting a pretty good chunk from Newburg Road where it's 96, all the way over to, to around, I believe it is to Shelvin Road. So a good chunk there as well. In addition, as far as things I'm personally working on, the bill that I've gotten the most headway on, and I'm hoping it comes to a vote in the Appropriations Committee, we already had a committee testimony on it, would guarantee free college tuition at a public university to any surviving children of a police officer firefighter who loses their life in the line of duty. It's got bipartisan support, cosponsors from both parties, and when I say bipartisan significant, I've got nine Republican cosponsors on it. It's one that I'm hoping moves to a vote. The Police Officers Association of Michigan, Fraternal Order of Police, Professional Firefighters Union, all have supported in committee along with various other police and fire groups. So I'm really optimistic about that from my end. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Two quick comments, is very happy about the opioids funding because that was one that kind of became political football, came back in, which we appreciated for Conference Western Lane. Second thing in terms of the roads, I see what's happening with the bonds and what have you, and we're kind of, over time, my fear is by the time we get things done, we have to start all over again, but there's, the dollars are more focused on the highways and major thoroughfares and not so much the locals. And Canton Township is still, even with the Rhodes Village passed and the funding from the Act 51 that the county's been sending our way, there's still a shortfall. So spending more monies on highways doesn't thrill me as a local guy that's got significant road issues.
Well, and I'll tell you, I share a lot of your concerns with that. When I heard, first heard state trunk lines, it was my hope that Ford Road and Ann Arbor Road would be included in that, and unfortunately, it wasn't. And of course, with bonds too, I mean, I'm never a big proponent of taking out new bonds too because it is more debt. If there's any light at the end of the tunnel with that, it's that we have a lot of bonds coming off the books in the next few years, and they were at much higher interest rates than this bond that's coming out now. So there actually is some, like as far as day-to-day cost, there's some reduction there from what it is right now, but at the same time, I hear you on the local end, and it's something we, we in the legislature need to get together and have a local roads funding plan. That's been the biggest thing we have not been able to get done.
Just to add to what Pat said, and I actually saw the representative earlier this week, and I mentioned that even with the local program we have for Ford Road, it's not going to improve things west of the Pizza Hut, Old Pizza Hut, the creek. And if there were funds that were available out of this somehow to maybe even increase that project while it's going on, that would be something of interest, I think.
I'd be all for it. And I know she has money set aside in this budget for local roads, but it's a low amount. There's local as well, some state roads that she's also set aside, but again, it's, it's not a very high amount.
It's a state road, but.
Yes, it is.
Of course, but yeah.
But it's compared to the whole state, how much she has set aside for that, it's not a true roads plan, which is something the legislature needs to come up with.
Yep.
Michael?
Just one brief issue. I have been talking a lot about absentee ballots for the last couple of weeks, but more importantly...
Opening?
What's that?
The opening of them?
Yeah, about the opening of the ballots. So you're, I'm sure you're familiar with Representative Leslie Love's bill in the House. I'm sure you're familiar with Senator, State Senator Ruth Johnson, former Secretary of State Ruth Johnson's bill in the Senate, which would allow for the opening of ballots, of AV ballots, the Monday prior to, so the day before the election. I understand there's some resistance among some of your colleagues, Representative Boland out of Brighton, Michigan as well. I spoke with Tina Barton, who is a Republican and is the clerk in Rochester Hills today about her support for the bill. I've talked to Susan Nash in Livonia, who's a Republican. So I want, if you can, when you talk to your colleagues up there and talk about the importance that us clerks are, you know, we're coming together in a bipartisan and a nonpartisan fashion to talk about the fact that if the law doesn't change, November will be a disaster for a number of communities. In Canton Township, we will be fine because we have implemented the resource, we've had the resources and we have the skill set in place. But there are a lot of communities out there that cannot handle twice as many absentee ballots in the exact same amount of time. I know in 2016, when I was elected clerk, they were still counting ballots at seven in the morning in the basement of this building because they lacked the ability to get it done. Those people had worked 22 hours straight. Most of our precinct inspectors are 74 years old. Asking a 74 or an 80-year-old to work 22 hours straight in a sequestered environment is inhumane. We need to change the law. You can't do twice as much work in the same amount of time.
And I will tell you that I'm 100% on board with the bills, just so you know. I have, I've spoken also to Plymouth Township Clerk Jerry Vorva, as well as Northfield Township Clerk Margie Banner, and they've echoed the exact same sentiment. I am 100% in support. I will make sure, and it's great because I have clerks on both sides of the aisle in my district, so it's something that I can absolutely say, hey, look, this is not a partisan issue. I've got both parties coming in. Like I said, I don't, I would never ask anybody to work for 22 straight hours counting ballots if we can do anything to speed up that process, which I know opening the ballots, just leaving them open seems to be the popular one that I've heard from, not necessarily counting them.
The consensus that everyone thinks would, would.
Which I heard that process, and you would know this better than I would, that process in its, in and of itself, just opening them is time-consuming.
Can be, yeah, yeah.
So yeah, I am all in favor of it. And any other ideas you have that you want me to communicate, please feel free. I don't want anyone to have to sit there, I don't care what age you are, no one should have to sit there and stand for that long and continue to count ballots.
Got 12 days to change the laws.
Well, not for March. We'll be fine, March 10th, we'll be fine. But I will tell you this, I mean, if I had, in my caucus up there, if I had somebody who had been the chief election official for eight years straight, I would probably listen to their advice. Ruth Johnson knows what she's talking about on this issue. And at the end of the day, if things go haywire in November, local clerks are going to give out Mike Shirkey's phone number and Ann Boland's phone number instead of having ours. Call your legislators, they set up, they set up this problem. They didn't listen to the clerks, they didn't take the warning, they didn't take our advice. The consequences should fall on the legislature, as far as I'm concerned.
And you know better than anybody, we're expecting a high volume of absentee ballots because of the new law.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that's the fix to kind of go to Supervisor Williams' point. I think the fix is probably aim more toward November than it obviously is here coming up, so.
Correct, yeah. But we're currently, we're at three, almost three times as many absentee ballots requested as we were four years ago for this, for this election. So if that happens in November, we're looking at over 35,000 ballots. That's a lot, so.
Well, I'll continue.
I'm sounding the alarm right now, so we're very clear on November. I would like the legislature to pick up the ball.
And I will make sure I echo those sentiments. Like I said, there, there seems to be a lot of chatter about it, so I gotta believe something's going to get done here, despite a few objections. I think those who know what they're doing, like you said, Senator Johnson being a good example, that, that have been down this road, at least on a smaller scale, because we've never had this kind of a law, but hopefully those will be heard, we can get that through for you.
Right. And if they're concerned about us being trailblazers, there are 39 other states that are doing this. So we don't have to worry too much about reinventing the wheel.
Absolutely.
Emory? Thank you. And if you want, you can catch Michael on Let Her Rip, if you want. He's our local movie star. He talked about this Sunday on TV.
I did see that, I've never even been invited on Let Her Rip.
I know, can you believe it?
First time on TV.
So we have something, we started something called the diversion program, and it started in September, and we saw some of the data in December. And what it is basically, rather than, it was started by Director Meyer and our Police Chief Chad Bow. If somebody, youth is, falls within this process flow that we have, he's either taken down to Detroit to be adjudicated with the juveniles, or we can put him into counseling with the family. And so when we saw the data, it looked good, a lot of the families went the Growth Works way. However, a lot of the young ladies were not eligible for the program. And the reason they weren't is because they fall, they fell under the domestic violence codes, which are codes 764.15A and 776.22. And basically what happens is if the police are called into a situation in a home and it's a domestic violence, no matter the age of the child, they have to take them, someone has to be arrested and taken to juvenile. So they could be seven years old, eight years old. So I don't know, if you could please work with us and our police and figure out how we can work on this municipal code and put some boundaries on it so it doesn't include children that are fighting in their homes. We had three families that came before the police and spoke to them. One of the kids was on the spectrum, and you know, one of them, it's a brother and sister fighting, and another one, a little schoolyard fight. So I mean, we have to be careful about taking our kids and putting them in juvenile just because of this particular instance in the domestic violence code.
To that point, if you'd like, we can set up an appointment, you and I can sit down, you can educate me further on it, and we can really kind of come up with some ideas together that you'd like me to take back to Lansing, I'd be happy to do that with you.
Thank you, because we have the data now, we've been tracking, we can show you what's been happening.
I'd be absolutely happy to.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And the renewable energy grants, do you know what, any more details on those?
That's just for those who pursue, it's basically tax credits for those who pursue renewable energy. If you think about somebody who wants solar, things like that.
On their homes then, basically?
Yeah, and there might be some commercial grants there too for companies that do it. But that, it was pretty vague as far as what specifically that's going to look like. It was more of a dollar amount that was set aside.
Okay. We're seeing, I mean, I think one of our electrical people said that there's a lot of electrical permits happening in Canton because people are buying Teslas and putting these in their garages, and I didn't know, does it include credits for anything like that?
That I'm not sure about.
Okay, all right.
Still very high level at this point because I barely had a chance to look at it, so we just got access to it a couple of weeks ago.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Public Act 51, going back to roads for a second. Is there any appetite in Lansing to do anything about the road funding formula or to allow larger townships to get some of the road funding money?
Trustee Foster, that's a great question. You know, everyone likes to talk about it.
Right.
But it seems like nobody wants to bring a plan forward. I think the problem you run into is if you're one of the rural representatives, you like Public Act 51. Because you're getting just as much funding as southeast Michigan. If you're us here in southeast Michigan, you hate Public Act 51 because you know we're using our roads a lot more, and we have the heavy trucks going through a lot more because of all the industry here. So while there's a lot of talk about it, I'm not confident in those who control the calendar right now's motivation to push forward with something new. That's about the most diplomatic answer I can give you.
I'll keep pushing though, but thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Workout tonight, Representative.
You earned your stripes tonight, thank you. The call for Treasurer Slavens, motion to pay the bills?
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second? Player, the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If the clerk would read the consent calendar as a single item.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approval of contract for fencing, maintenance, and repair. Item C2, consider approval of contract extension for fire safety system services and equipment. Item C3, consider approval of application for MLCC special liquor license. Number C4, consider approval, authorization of 2020 fiscal year specialized services operating assistance program agreement. Item C5, resolution regarding exploration of district, pardon me, court consolidation. Item C6, request budget amendment for the carryover of fiscal year 2019 open purchase orders to fiscal year 2020.
Report. Player, the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item up on the general calendar is consider approval of special land use for VA community outpatients. Clinic.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, approval of the special land use for the VA outpatient clinic, whereas project sponsor Johnson Healthcare Real Estate has requested special land use approval for a medical clinic, VA outpatient medical clinic on the east side of Lot's Row between Ford and Warren Roads, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the request and special land use criteria and voted six to zero to recommend approval as the proposal meets the general criteria for special land use, subject to approval of the addition of the proposed right turn lane on southbound Lot's Road north of Ford Road by Wayne County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for special land use for a medical clinic on parcel, on the tax parcel listed, as the proposal meets the general criteria for special land use, subject to approval of the addition of the proposed right turn lane on southbound Lot's Road north of Ford Road by Wayne County and all other applicable local and state regulations.
Support.
In summary, the applicant's proposing again to develop a 45,000 square foot outpatient medical clinic for veterans administration on the southern portion of the 20-acre site located east of Lot's and north of Ford Road. Primary access will be provided from the existing commercial driveways along the north side of Sam's Club property and the north-south driveway from Ford Road in between Sam's Club and Walmart. The east-west drive will be extended 450 feet to the east to provide access and circulation for the VA parking lot. A southbound right turn lane will be added to Lot's Road north of Ford Road, again, to mitigate additional traffic impacts. And we do have representatives here from SSCO as well as MEDC. I don't know if the board has any questions or comments it would like to make, but is there anything you guys would like to share? And I see there's a request for a public question or comment in the back, so please, Mr. McCauslin, why don't we do, why don't you ask a question first or comment, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Good evening, my name is Daniel McCauslin, and I am a property owner in the corporate overlay district, which bounds the corridor that the VA center will be located in. My comments tonight are really not specifically about the VA project itself, but the underlying criteria that got us here with the VA project. So a couple of quick questions I would have. The property that is proposed for the development was representative of the 20% open space requirement that was necessary for the original Auto Nation used car facility that was located there. That facility was then raised to become Walmart and Sam's Club. So my question would be, is that 20% open space now being sold, assigned, or assumed for a new development project, which would then negate the need for the 20% open space that was required for the Sam's Club? That's a separate question. Now, another question that I have, is there an easement that can be granted because on this project, we're using existing driveways that are already in place? Now, in the corporate overlay, there's specific language that says, and this is relative, this is relative to the whole corridor. This is not just relative to this project. I'm trying to see, going forward, what type of criteria are we going to look at here? So can an easement to a basically landlocked property be allowed by existing private driveways? Because the driveways that are existing are that, they were designed for the primary use of the Walmart-Sam's Club. Same thing with the 20% open space. Same thing with the retention and detention, which is now basically going to be assigned or assumed by another owner. So I'm trying to get to the fundamentals, because we always said that this would happen through the corporate overlay. And this has nothing to do with the VA. It could be an ice cream stand. We're talking about the fundament, the fundamentals of the underlying corporate overlay park, and this is how we got to this juncture. So those are the questions that I pose before the panel tonight.
Thank you. Are we in a position, because this is technical, and there's historical pieces here that none of us were sitting here, including your staff, some of your staff may have been here back when. Can we address?
I guess the comment I would have is that I have to go back to the community planner and discuss that with them, but this is just for the special, special land use approval. This has nothing to do with the site plan. There's a conceptual plan that's included, but the site plan is not being approved tonight. This is just the special land use. So if there's any sort of easements or any sort of agreements with neighboring properties, that'll all be worked out through the course of the, of the project.
Yeah, please, if you'd approach the podium, introduce yourself, and then share with us your perspective.
Thank you, Supervisor Williams. My name is Derek Weaver. I'm with Johnson Healthcare Real Estate. I can speak to a couple of the questions that were just asked as it relates to, and I may butcher the term, but as it relates to open spaces, I'm not certain about that. However, as it relates to our lot, as the developer owner of the VA clinic, we do have frontage on Lot's, on Lot's Road from our lot, so we did meet that legal requirement. And the access easement has been in place since the creation of the Walmart and Sam's parcels. Auto Nation sold those parcels to Walmart Stores, Inc. for that development. They left in place, and there's always been an access easement for this parcel, so it's not a new granting of access, it's one that's existed the entire time. And that's the access that the VA will use to get to Lot's Road via that easement, an existing driveway.
Terms of the green space, that's one we can circle back through planning. Okay, very good. Are there any other questions, comments from board at this point? This is special land use. Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you, Pat. Can you start by explaining the relationship between your organization and the VA? I'm not clear on it, so, because you're not the government, right?
You're correct. Johnson is a privately owned real estate company. We're based in Birmingham, Alabama, with offices in Indianapolis and Dallas. We've had an eight-year running relationship with the Department of Veteran Affairs. They have awarded us so far 11 build-to-suit leases to provide outpatient clinics for VA healthcare. This is the 11th of those projects. Our projects stretch across 10 different states, 10 different municipalities. So it is a very robust relationship built on a lot of trust, a lot of experience that we have with the VA. So we will be constructing, owning, and leasing this property to the Department of Veteran Affairs, and they will be operating it under a 20-year lease, initial term.
So the VA will be actually operating the clinic?
That is correct.
I see, okay. And then, looking at the map, I mean, we talked about open space, and I would like to understand what that agreement was back then, and whether we're changing anything in that, just to understand it, so, but we can do that at a later time in the process. But there are a lot of trees in this area, I think. The first thing is, it's hard for me, Jade, from this, to understand where Lot's Road is on this and where the road is, that, the access road.
So Lot's, this is just one map that was in the packet, Lot's will be on your left-hand side.
Okay, so that's.
The access road is the very bottom of the, of the map, basically. It's the private drive that you see that goes behind Sam's Club and Walmart now.
Okay. And is that, is there an alternate access that will be provided?
We have access, the easement on the private drive that dissects the lots between Walmart and Sam's, and comes to a lighted intersection, I believe, serving Walmart-Sam's on Ford Road. So we have dual points of access.
Okay. And, and then my other question, well, first of all, I'm assuming that there'll be replacement for the trees that are back there?
Once the, the tree inventory is done, I don't know if that's, what stage you guys are in with that as of yet.
We have just gotten some survey information in on the trees. It was more specific to the roosting concerns as it related to endangered species. I'm told by, by my, my colleagues that we do have the tree survey as well. And yes, as far as our tree cutting permit, we'll be complying with all the requirements, including the replacement funds.
And then lastly, it talks about the right turn lane. And in the Planning Commission minutes, I noticed they talked about extending that so that there would be slowdown lanes for the entrances across the street for that complex, the Gordon's food and stuff. And so I'll be interested during the process to see if we're going to do that or able to do that, because if it starts backing up further, it could help alleviate it if people can get into those, that shopping strip in Gordon's if they want to, without adding to the traffic problem and having to wait for the light to clear. So, anyway, that was my only comment on that.
Hi, Emory.
So at the Planning Commission meeting, we talked a lot about that, and I noticed you did say, thank you, you did say you were going to pay for the road, but it has, has it made it all the way through Wayne County, though? Has all the improvement suggestions or?
We have submitted plans to the county for stormwater permits, and traffic is lagging that a little bit. The requirement for this turn lane was unforeseen for our project. The, the conditions at that intersection, I think as we discussed a little bit in planning, had been existing for some time. The addition of the VA clinic adds to that condition by about a factor of 17%, but it was not a improvement, an off-site improvement that our project foresaw, and that's caused some concern for us from an economic standpoint, is something that we did not budget for. We have, and I'll reiterate that commitment tonight, we have committed to construct those road improvements. We're still searching for a, a source of funds for that. To give you a little bit of insight into the process with the VA, we're building this project, they are leasing it from us under what's called a fixed-price contract, federal term. So there is a finite amount of funds available for the project. Doing these off-site improvements, this Lot's Road turn lane onto Ford is borrowing from monies that would otherwise be spent on the VA clinic itself. So we're looking for some ways and means to mitigate that expense so that we do contribute to improvement, not just on our property, but surrounding. We've got representatives from Wayne County with us tonight. David Schreiber has committed to working with us. And we would also like to take this opportunity to ask the township to act, whether it can economically or just in a sponsorship role, as we search out for some additional means for funding. We're looking at some opportunities with state DOT funds that can possibly contribute. We're looking at some opportunities with state DOT funds that can possibly contribute towards this improvement and alleviate some of the burden, the additional burden that's put on the VA project budget.
All looking for roads money. We're all looking for roads money.
Obviously, we are too. We've talked about it. There's some funds potentially available. They require some matching. I think the project itself could provide that matching if we got some sponsorship and were able to push through, getting a grant for some of these additional funds. It would be greatly appreciated by Johnson, as well as the VA and all the veterans that we serve.
On your way out, you can switch, trade cards with Representative Colazare.
Perfect.
No, that would be great. Actually, I mean, obviously, the veterans, it's great to have an outpatient facility here. And from what I also understand, you aren't going to clear everything. It's just a finite portion.
That's correct. The entire parcel is approximately 20 acres, and most of it is wooded. We're clearing, Mandy, help me, about five to six acres. It's approximately 7.7 acres then. The rest will remain wooded. I'm pleased to report that we do have the roosting survey in. And I think it's, I think once you see it, it's minimal impact on the tree canopy. A lot of the roost trees that were identified, in fact, a majority of them are already dead, still standing, but dead. So, I think our impact, long-term, on that canopy and the tree coverage there is going to be minimal with the VA project.
And then, I guess one more thing is, so, yeah, how would we figure out the 20% open space? And who's here from Wayne County? I'm sorry, you said you brought, okay. Could you just let us know what your thoughts are on where it is in the process for your approvals or anything?
I'm with the Economic Development.
Ah, okay.
I work very closely with our DPS, and I will be working with them and with the company on this.
Okay, I see, okay. All right, thank you. Now, what about the 20%? That's just an open question then that we have?
Jade will take that question, come back with an answer to all.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. No, we voted, we're moving on. It's not a debate, sir. It's just you had your opportunity to ask questions. Yes. Okay, you have additional questions? All right, come on up.
Robert McCuslin, I own property in the corporate overlay district. We've asked the question four times. Ms. Hudek asked it twice to Jeff Goulet. I asked it twice. Regards to the open space, manipulation is what it is. It's a manipulation in order to get to, and you know what? My dad was a veteran, my uncle was a veteran, my cousins are veterans, my friends are veterans. We've got nothing against veterans. I would like to see them in a nice spot, where they have a nice facility, where we can show it off, where they're not back in the alley somewhere, okay? That's what I want for this community. But no, we never do things right. We just can't do it, we can't get it right. You know, we laid down the criteria for all this. This was going to be the greatest thing since sliced bread. You know, it's been built from Ford, it's been built from Ann Arbor Road all the way up to Pontiac Trail. And you know what? They got some darn nice developments. Why can't Canton get this right? Because the impeding of the corporate overlay district stops all development. And I don't know what Jeff Goulet, little brainstorm he's got, he won't give it up. It's time to revisit the corporate development, get rid of it, start from scratch, move forward, and show what a nice development could be. This is not a great development, I mean, it's a great use, don't get me wrong, but it could be a better development. I'd like to see this revisited in a different area.
Thank you. All right, I think that concludes that item. Is there a second motion associated with, or a single motion?
Nope.
Very good. Item G2, consider award of contract for 2020 tree planting, thank you guys, tree planting program to the Cribboli Nursery.
Mister Supervisor, I move to... Mister Supervisor, I move to award a contract for the 2020 spring tree planting to Cribboli Nursery to perform tree planting work along major streets for a base bid price of $29,820 plus an additional $5,180 reserve to plant trees as needed per the unit price prices quoted in the bid throughout the year for a total purchase order not to exceed $35,000.
Planting Services received five qualified bids for 2020 spring tree planting to replace the trees along the various major roads throughout the community. Lowest qualified bidder was Cribboli Nursery, Inc. with bid of $29,820 stated for the work. Are there any board questions or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3. Consider authorization of purchase order to Fishbeck, Inc. for professional engineering services for the 2020 road improvement program.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order contract for the 2020 major road construction projects to Fishbeck Incorporated in the amount of $230,051.
October 22nd, 2019, the board authorized extension of our contracts with Fishbeck, Inc. for the 2020 and 21 seasons. Since October, the following projects have been authorized, Canton Center, Warren to Hagerty, Warren, Hanford, and Hagerty Palmer to Michigan Avenue. The scope of this work for these projects has been settled, and the detailed engineering design, construction costs have been determined. Are there any board questions or comments for Jade?
Are these the same ones we used last year? Okay.
Comments, those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G4. Consider two contracts, one to Briget Bidagir Contracts, Inc., and the other to Fishbeck for the 2020 Water Main Capital Improvement Project.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment and further award contracts as presented in the amount totaling $2,000, sorry, $2,661,849 for the 2020 Water Main Capital Improvement Projects, and further authorize the Township Supervisor or Clerk to sign the contracts on behalf of the Charter Township of Canton.
2018 Water Master Plan identified a number of projects necessary to meet existing and future water demands of our customers. In addition, the Master Plan staff is constantly evaluating locations that are experiencing multiple main breaks in a relatively small area. Staff is recommending the award to Bidagir Contractors as stated for 2020 Water Main Capital Improvement Project for the amounts as stated. This award of the contract covers the construction installation of the Warren Road Pressure-Reducing Valve, as well as continuation of the contract for water main replacement, existing, underperforming, and unreliable water mains. Staff is also recommending continuation of contract for construction management and inspection services to Fishback in the amount not to exceed, as a subpart of this, in the amount of $73,624. Fishback served in the same position for us last year. Are there any questions for Jade? Seeing none, those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G5. All single motions. This is moving fast. Consider approval of lease for Toro Real Master mowing units and Multi Pro sprayer.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve the leases of three Toro Real Master 5140D mowing units and one Toro Multi Pro 1750 Green Sprayer Unit from Spartan Distributors in the amount of $43,596.27 per year for five years, plus a one-time $250 documentation fee.
A Fresno Run Golf Club uses many pieces of turf maintenance equipment to maintain the 27-hole golf course. Would like to acquire the equipment as stated. With this option, we will own the vehicles at the end of the lease. These mowers, sprayers are sole source and municipal-priced, which means the mowers cannot be bought at a lower price. There is a one quote reflecting the municipal price from Spartan Distributors in the attachments that were in your decks. Are there any questions for Greg Holenberger, Director Holenberger? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6. Consider approval of two contracts and purchase orders for the paving, 2020 paving maintenance program.
This is in the form of two motions. Mister Supervisor, I move to award a three-year contract and submit a purchase order for the general paving rehabilitation to True North Asphalt at 1241 East 11 Mile Madison Heights, Michigan, 4071, in the amount of $50,000 to be paid from the account number listed for the Capital Outlay Buildings and Improvements Fund for seal coating and crack sealing.
December 2019, a request for proposal was advertised for paving maintenance program for various pavement restoration projects throughout the township. Five proposals were received, and all the companies were interviewed by a panel consisting of leisure services, municipal services, and finance staff. After careful evaluation, staff chose to divide the contract between two companies to fit the township's needs. As the needs of the township vary, we are recommending to award one contract to True North Asphalt to maintain all seal coating and crack sealing needs for the township, and a second contract is recommended to Donjo Construction LLC, who will maintain all the patching, repair, and emergency calls when needed. Additional details are in the deck as required. Are there any questions for Director Holenberger? Seeing none, those in favor of the first motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Second motion.
Mister Supervisor, I further move to award a three-year contract and submit a purchase order to Donjo Construction LLC at 5781 South Sheldon Road, Suite B, Canton, Michigan, 48188, in the amount of $50,000 to be paid from the account number listed for patching and repair, as well as emergency calls.
Okay. Those in favor of the second motion is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G, that's it? Wow, that completes?
G7.
Seven.
There we go. Thank you. There we go. Consider approval to award bid, amend the budget, and submit a purchase order for a We Go Round Playground Surfacing Installation at Heritage Park.
All right, and this is, I'm going to do this in the form of one motion, even though it's listed as two. Mister Supervisor, I move to award a contract and award a purchase order with Penchura LLC at 889 Old US 23, Brighton, Michigan, 48114, in the amount of $133,000. Of the total amount, $103,000 will be taken from the account number listed for CBBG ADA improvements and to approve the attached budget amendments.
Just a point of order correction, it's a total amount of 113 with contingency included in the body notes.
113?
Yes, sir.
103 out of the CBBG.
Okay, very good. Very good. Perfect. Do we have a support for the motion?
Support.
Okay, in January 2020, a request for bid was advertised for We Go Round and Playground Surfacing Installation at Heritage Park. There was one bid provided by Pencher LLC in the amount of $156,562. Fund balance remaining in the CBDG budget for this project is 103. Therefore, in order to meet the budget, Leisure Services staff determined some scope of the work could be done in-house and negotiated a lower cost with the contractor. A summary is provided in the attachment in your deck. The negotiated bid with Penchura LLC, as well as the work, will be done by in-house staff. And I don't know if you guys remember, but during our study session with Leisure Services, this is the unit where if someone's in a wheelchair, they can go into it and, Greg, I've got that correct, right? I'm, okay. Yeah, it's...
Jade's going to throw up a picture for us?
Neat thing where, you know, the whole family can get on and go for a ride in the merry round together. Jade, or not Jade, Greg and I rode one in Novi, it was fun.
Is there video of that?
There you go.
So, you know, the bottom of that surface area will be flush with the playground surface. So, you'll be able to, if you are in a wheelchair, just wheel right onto this, no need for tie-downs or anything like that. But it's also accessible, have seats for those that aren't in wheelchairs. So, the intent is that it'll be universally accessible and used by both individuals with disabilities and those without disabilities.
By applying pressure to the center wheel, that's what makes it go around. And it does not take a lot of effort to have it go around. It's kind of cool. So, that's what it is. Any other questions or comments for Director Holenberger? Go ahead Michael.
I'll just say, I think one of the things I think is so great about this item is it's not just, it's not just for an individual with a disability, it's something where you have universal participation, as you just said. So, it gives everybody the exact same experience. I think that's what makes this a pretty unique item and a pretty worthwhile expenditure. So, good job in securing this. I know there's been a lot of effort to making, especially Heritage Park, have some ADA accessible playground equipment, but this is a pretty cool, pretty cool purchase.
Yep, go ahead.
Can I ask then, is the way to get up to it all clear? So, do we have an asphalt path for the wheelchairs?
Yep, so there will be, it's a concrete path that, or I can't remember if it's concrete or asphalt, but then it'll go onto the poured-in-place surfacing. So, that's universally accessible as well, so kind of that hard rubberized surface instead of like wood chips or anything like that. So, that's actually what our staff is, the internal work that our staff is doing, that thanks to the weather not being, what it normally is this time of year, our staff is actually removing all of the old surfacing for that entire area, because it's passed its useful life anyways. So, we're incorporating that into this process, our project. So, removing the old is what our staff is doing and doing some additional drainage work as well.
Right, so do you think we'll be putting this at maybe more parks? I mean, this is the number one, right? Just the one over by the fire station? And then, we have that other one?
Yeah, this is the North Pavilion Lot. So, we could, you know, certainly look to have items at other parks, but our focus has been on making this one kind of our primary universally accessible. We try and have ADA, we absolutely have to have, and try to have ADA accessible items at all of our playgrounds, but really making our focus on one centrally located, more universally accessible playground.
Good job.
Questions, those in favor of the motions presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our formal agenda. Is there any additional staff comments? Additional board comments?
We just, we had Michael, who represented Canton well on Letter Rip, so thank you for that. Also, congratulations Grandpa Pat, you're a grandpa again, baby. And then, I guess congratulations also to Josh Meyer and Chris Stockline for their new awards, new awarded positions, making Canton proud. Thank you.
Leaders in their field, so it's wonderful. Yep.
We got some good news from Wayne County about roads. Couple weeks ago, there are road projects for 2020 in Canton. So, Jade, do you want to say anything about that? Because I know people at home are curious.
I just turned off my computer, but...
Well, just Sheldon was a huge one.
Sheldon is a big one, and then Cherry Hill, there's a significant portion of Cherry Hill that's being done over the course of the next two years. It's going to be a complete reconstruct to the tune of almost $7 million. So, that's a, I think that's a huge commitment on the county's part. And then, the Sheldon north of Warren, I'm sorry, north of Ford will be very welcome as well. Yes.
I see there's additional public comment. Okay, on the agenda, we did not have public comment at the end tonight, but we'll make an exception. Come on up.
I know, so, because according to your agenda, everything that we want to talk about is under consent calendar. And in our city, consent calendar is passed by the council, and there are no discussions.
Right.
So...
Yeah, generally what those items are.
So, I'm going to talk, I guess, on a non-agenda item comment, but this is on the agenda. So, that's why you're confusing the public.
Oh, no problem. Okay, yeah, go ahead, go right ahead.
So, I have given you my comment card. My name is Nancy Lee Pride. I'm also a Metatal. But I live in the city of Wayne, and we are very concerned about our court being closed and incorporated into another city. On the back of this card, I've given you some very vital information, because I know your city is residential, commercial. So, on the back of this... So on the back of this, there's some very interesting messaging. Maybe there needs to be an incorporation other than court. I'll let you read it. But we're concerned about three programs that if your courts can't do it, and they're all paid, they're all paid by grants. And those three programs are the truancy division, the RBTC division of our court, and we also have an eviction division to help people, and there's also a portion of some of these programs that help the mentally health people, since we've had a governor who cut all help in that area a long time ago. It behooves us to try to reinstate that, to help the people who might not understand all of these legal things. And it helps them to become more aware of it and be treated like a human being. Those three programs are very important to us. The most important thing to me is that our police department is already constrained. Already, we only have three cars in our city. We are six square miles of total industry, and I know you're lacking that. I am very upset that, that our city manager is going out seeking this without talking to even our courts. They learned about it by, via Inkster, they went to Inkster, but Inkster doesn't touch our border. That judge talked to our Judge Mack, and this is how we all found out about this. And so we're on fast track right now. I'm concerned that the monies that it's going to take to bring a person into a courtroom, because everybody has their day in court, you can do it televised, and that's, I think, only done when they're being processed. But when they have a day in court, they have to be there in person. They can't do it by videotape. So that's going to take a police officer off our street to then drive all the way from Wayne all the way here, or all the way to Romulus. And I'm concerned that our, our protection in our city via also the fact that the police are now vulnerable when they're moving this prisoner, the shorter distance you have to move a prisoner, the less likely you are to have any interference with that person. So those are some of my concerns. And like I said, I wrote on the back of this a proposal that I think you should look at. Our city is almost in receivership. We have no money to pay for a boiler to be put in our pool that we are landlords of. The gentleman who is running that right for us, he's leasing it, has purchased a boiler to put in, but our city manager will not let him put it in because she has other agendas on mind.
Ma'am, if I, if I may, is I.
So I just, I just would like you to read the back of the card and consider maybe another avenue.
Okay.
Hi?
All right, thank you very much for your comments, and if you would please, we'll take the, the comment card to the clerk.
I will scan that in, and I will ensure I send this to every trustee.
And, and you, you coming by this evening is timely, and I, I think, I could share a couple things with you and the rest of the board, is today we had a board of directors meeting for 35th District Court. 35th District Court is run by five communities, and the board of directors consists of the mayors and supervisors of the two Plemmons, the two Northvilles, and Canton Township. What we approved today at the 35th District Court was being open-minded to a potential investigation of what may or may not work in terms of partnering. There is absolutely zero movement today to do anything as a partnership. What it's doing is allowing the state of Michigan, either through the Treasury Department or the SCIO, which if you know Judge Mack, you would know that Judge Mack's husband, Miltback, was the guy in charge of SCIO. I spent the last year and a half with him on a trial court funding commission thing. Super nice guy, nice couple. Judge Mack's very involved in our Families Against Narcotics, so a lot of good things happening with the, that family in Canton Township. That being said, it's a long shot that there's any partnership ever going to happen between the city of Wayne and Canton Township because of the physical distance between the two facilities. It makes a heck of a lot more sense that the partnership would happen with either Romulus's courts or the city of Westlands. And there was actually a study that was done, and, and at the end of the day, this body is doing nothing other than approving what the five communities have already said blessed, and that is, yeah, go ahead and do the study, tell us what you think and make a recommendation. We'll decide then, based on recommendations, if there's any interest in actually doing anything. So we are months, if not years, away from doing that. In the meantime, between time, I understand that your governor is working hard to appoint a new judge in Wayne, behind the scenes, but that kind of goes in conflict with what the state of Michigan needs, and I'm gonna stop talking there. And I, we went way off on a tangent on this one, but your timing is good, and it is an interesting topic for those who will hear about it. Go ahead, Michael, we've gone this far, let's keep going.
Yeah, I mean, no, I, I do know, I was always going through the old minutes, and I saw in 2000, I believe 2001, the board passed a resolution to, to promote hiring a third judge. And it just got me thinking that I, I understand a lot of district courts are not seeing the volume that they used to see. I, I know district courts tend to deal with delinquent youth, they tend to deal with drinking and driving, minors drinking, and they used to deal with possession of marijuana charges, which they no longer deal with anymore. So a lot of crime is, is gone because the law changed. And so if we don't pursue consolidations at some point, we might want to have a conversation about that third judge, and if that makes sense from an economic standpoint going forward, I hate to, you know, I'm friends with all three of them, but it's not, you know, we, we like them, we like the service level, but at some point, we have to probably talk about, I know you guys are working hard, and I wouldn't step on what goes on over there, but just putting that out into the ether since we're talking about budget cuts in district courts. I know Kalamazoo County, the circuit and the district court have the same geographic boundary, which is kind of weird because we're in Wayne County, and the circuit court is so big and inclusive, and the district courts are so small. But there, the county is the entire district, which is just a, it's just kind of an interesting way of doing it.
35th District Court is one of all this, I think, there may be two of us in this category, across the state of Michigan, that actually has positive cash flow. We are the exception, not the rule, so.
Crime is good.
Any other questions or comments? Because we've gone way deeper than we had intended.
I had one thing about the election, and I'll just get it out real quick. We mailed out 13,500 ballots, and we have received, eh, just under 6,000 of those, and the election is two weeks away. I understand some people might be holding on to those ballots, concerned that perhaps their candidate choice might not be on, might not be on the ballot by the time the election comes around. You have the opportunity to spoil that ballot up to the day before the election if you would like to. But at some point, if you've got a ballot, make sure you vote that, bring it back. Additionally, you can hand-drop it off, it might be what's recommended. I had, I, I have been studying the ballots that have been coming in through the mail. Most of them mailed in Canton are taking three to four days, that's fine. But I did have a ballot from Florida that took 17 days. That's got me concerned right now, okay? So anybody who's out of the state, if you're watching on basic cable, I guess you wouldn't be, but if you're leaving and you want to mail it from outside of the state, I would recommend seriously considering sending it's priority mail, so you can guarantee it gets here in two days. It's unfortunate that that's the case, but that is what it is. I don't run the mail system, I just make sure that we count the votes. I just want to make sure that those ballots get in prior to 8:00 PM on Election Day, so that's all.
All for motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion to adjourn? Say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, all.